We're good?
Okay, we're on Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. So now we can call the meeting to order. I would like to call the March 6, 1923 workshop of the Greenville City Council to order. I am Mayor Pro Tem Rose Glover and I will be presiding over the workshop. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
All right, yes ma'am. Mayor Conley, Mayor Conley has let us know that he will not be attending tonight's meeting. Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson, and Councilmember Robinson should be joining us a little bit later. But Mayor Pro Tem, you have a call.
All right, well, come on. So, um, we're on it. The approval of the agenda item?
Mr. Pro, second.
Okay.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. Will need a vote.
We need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, would you like me to call the first item?
First, five or six?
Five, zero, excuse me.
Five, one, three.
Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So the first item is a discussion of the conflict of interest for public officials on nonprofit boards, and city attorney Emmanuel McGirt has that presentation. Mr. McGirt?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Greetings, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. This item is entitled "Conflicts of Interest for Public Officials on Nonprofit Boards." So this statute that is in question is General Statute 14-234.3. It is entitled "Local Public Officials Participating in Contracts Benefiting Nonprofits With Which Associated." So the statute provides that if a public official shall knowingly participate in making or administering a contract with any nonprofit which with the public official is associated, then that is a conflict of interest. So what's the concern here? The statute provides that if the same public official has the power to contract with a nonprofit, and also on the other side of the transaction is associated with the same nonprofit as a voting board or board member or governing body, or the governing body or voting board member, then you have a conflict of interest. The statute says that a contract is void when the council member participates in making or administering a contract with a nonprofit that the council member is associated with. Some of the policy concerns here are that the, it seems the General Assembly was concerned about self-dealing, about a public official being on both sides of the same deal. So who's covered by this statute? Local government officials? It doesn't cover state officials. It covers city council members, county commissioners.
Wait, it doesn't cover state officials?
No, it does not.
Do they just vote themselves out?
Well, they, apparently something got underneath the General Assembly's skin, probably there's something that happened with the city or county, and so they addressed the situation. So it just covers local government officials, and so consider these three scenarios, and I'll tell you whether or not the council member can vote. The first scenario is if the council member is also a member of the nonprofit board for which the city is awarding a contract. So if the council members are both sides of the deal, the statute says that the council member cannot vote. That is a conflict of interest, and before the city can enter into the contract, the council member has to recuse themselves. And that's what we've been advising our council to do when there's a council member on a nonprofit board, to recuse yourself. After that point, the council can lawfully enter the contract. How about the situation if the city, the city, the council member, not the city manager, but the council member resigns from being a member on the nonprofit board for which the city is awarding a contract? So now if the council member resigns from the nonprofit board, the council member is no longer on both sides of the transaction, that is not a conflict of interest, and the council member can vote when the nonprofit, the contract involving the nonprofit comes before the council. Now, how about this situation, the third situation? If the council member resigns from the nonprofit board, and instead the nonprofit board amends its rules to name the council member a liaison. Now, the statute says you're associated with the nonprofit when you're a council member, a director, or an officer. So the school government says that in a situation where the council member's on the nonprofit side, but they are not, are in an insignificant position, like a volunteer or insignificant position, then the statute, you're not covered, you don't fall within the statute. So the penalty, now this is very important, we've been careful about this statute, and all the other city attorneys have also, because the statute says revotally that the, anyone who knowingly participates is, is subject to a class-one misdemeanor. And also, the contract that the city entered into is void. So again, the way to get around that is if there's a conflict, we've advised the council member to recuse, and then the city can lawfully enter into the contract pursuant to the statute. The public official has to record the recusal with the clerk, and once that recusal is done, the city can enter into the contract. Now, at the bottom of this slide, you have the definition, so what's a nonprofit for which the public official is associated? You see that it talks about if the council member is a director, an officer, or a governing board member, you fall within the statute. What does it mean to participate in making or administering the contract? You deliberate or vote on the contract, or if you attempt to influence a person who's voting, the statute is also triggered. So, these are the options. First of all, following the advice that we've been given, compile the statute. If you're on both sides of the deal, you have a conflict, you have to recuse, and then the city can lawfully enter into the contract. Next option is to just get off the, get off the nonprofit board. I've talked with one city attorney, he said, oh, their council member said we're getting off the boards then. That's another option. The last option is if you remove the council member from the nonprofit board, and if we ask the nonprofit board to amend its rules to allow the council member to be a liaison, they can still attend the meetings of the nonprofit, share information. We just need to define, we need to define in their rules that they're a liaison, they're a non-voting member, they cannot deliberate, but they can, they can, you know, be in an insignificant position. So those are the options, and we are here to find out what the council's pleasure is going forward.
I'm sorry, I was trying to hit that button just as you finished. Go ahead and finish.
I'm done, I'm done.
My, first question that comes to mind is, I think one of the reasons that council, that Rick brought this up, was because it seems like someone who has a lot of information, expertise about a situation, and if I've got this wrong, let me know, but Will is on the E and C board, is that right? And Rick was saying, here we have a situation where we really need that expertise, we really need to be able to hear from Will about his experience with this matter, and yet we cannot. And I think that's why this issue came up. Now, if Will, just using that as an example, if that were the situation, could Will participate, or could a council member on a board participate in the discussion about the matter as long as that person did not vote, or is that person must remain throughout the entire discussion silent?
Well, if they're a liaison, I'm of the opinion they don't fall within the language of the statute. They're not a governing board member, so if, if the alliance is willing to amend their rules and call them a liaison, they can't vote. First of all, it clearly can't vote. They can share information, I would just be careful, it's a new statute.
Let's say they're a vote, let's go back and say they're a voting member, the situation we have right now, where they're a voting member. They clearly cannot vote with the council, but can they participate in discussion with the council?
No.
They cannot. They just need to sit and not participate at all.
Right, again, the statute says you can't deliberate or vote.
Cannot deliberate or vote.
Right, deliberate or voting is prohibited.
So that really gets it, I think, if I understand Rick's concern, which is, we have this expertise, we're not able to use it because the board member can't even participate in deliberation or conversation at all.
Yeah, and specifically, we appointed a member of our council to go to that organization for the purpose of bringing information back to us. That's the reason we put a member of the council on that board, and we're being prohibited from enjoying the benefit of that information. And so I think that we need, the reason I asked this to be brought up is I'd like us to make arrangements such that, you know, whoever we send there, and whatever role they fill there, when they come back, they can tell us what they learned, right? I mean, that's the, now, the only point, the only adjustment I would make to what you're doing is that I, I think that the, that E and C alliance does not need to redefine that position. I think they need to create a liaison position for the, for, I remember that the city can appoint somebody too, so that if this passed, Will could resign his board seat, we could appoint another member to that board seat, it would be a community member, not one of ours, because we get three appointees to that board, if I'm correct. And then the liaisons would be a new position which would not, which the city would have, you know, in order to accomplish the goal we're talking about, but I don't want us to give up one of the voting members, voting positions on the board.
Right, right, of course.
You know, that's, we, you know, that's what we get, that was part of the original deal, is that we would have three voting members on that board. So what we need is, yeah, we're going to keep our three voting members, assuming this passes, and I'm not trying to force Will in any particular place, that, yeah, if our council member resigns, we'll appoint another community member to sit there instead, and then Will can attend as, or the council appointee can attend as a liaison.
And I don't know who this is the best question for, but before we change, you know, and then Will have something to say about this, since he is the person on the board, and remove that voting, wait a minute, remove the voting ability that that person currently has on the board, they would, they do not have a voting ability with council, but have a voting ability on that board, is that perhaps more important than the person's ability to vote on the exact contract with us? Could the, could the city member share the information they gained with us outside of a meeting, as you do?
I don't know.
And then not vote on the contract itself? I don't know, I just have something to think about.
I would have trouble explaining to my voters that I had accepted a position that precluded me from representing their interests on city council.
Although you, although you would, or the person would be able to represent them with this other body?
Right.
Where there is not representation.
Yeah, but again, you know, that's an appointed position, this is an elected position. I don't know how you put some, in my opinion, I don't know how you put something in front of that.
Okay, no, I mean, I get, I get what you're saying. I think it's, I think it's worth examining before we lose a vote on the board where we currently have it.
No, I'm not talking about us losing a vote.
The council member.
I'm talking about replacing the vote with somebody else so that we can
Right, got it.
Enjoy the benefit of our liaison, our proposed liaisons' experience of what he sees and hears there. But again, if, this is just my, and I don't want this to be my hobby horse, right? If you guys, if other people think that I'm, you know, howling at the moon here, then just tell me and we'll give it up.
Well, since, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, feel free not to respond, but since you're the person in the exact situation, how do you see it?
I mean, I think personally, we can just leave it as is, and, you know, maybe the point for me to do better is to maybe communicate things ahead of time before the voting, so that it's not actually, you know, come to the point where I need to recuse myself, so sharing information a little more frequently, I might, I might solve the entire issue. Because, I mean, it's pretty clear, it's just, I'm not supposed to talk, or I'm not supposed to vote or deliberate, but if I were to give the information before we were actually taking, before it was an action item, that would be for me to still correct.
Yeah, no, this goes further, it says deliberating or voting of the contract, or attempting to influence any other person who is deliberating a vote. So I would just stay out of, that's the cleanest way.
So why does the information have to come from Will? We've appointed two other people as well.
Well, if it doesn't come from Will, at that point, we, we really kind of lose the reason that, that as a council member, we would appoint Will, because he's
No, we appointed a council member along with two other people because we have to leave seats. So it doesn't necessarily mean he has to be the one to bring everything back to us. If you're relying on the people that you appointed to get the information, it can be someone, someone else, especially since the conflict arises when it's him. I understand you want the information directly from the council member, but, I mean, what information would be different?
And I also want to say that the city manager is an ex-official member of the board, and is a voting member on the, what's they were the board?
The executive committee.
Executive committee, thank you. She still has a voice, she's not covered by the statute.
Again, I don't like the, the specific situation we're in, and I don't like the, just the idea that any, any appointment of the city, that a, that any city council member would have, would be on another board that was senior, that amounted to being senior to this board in terms of their ability to act and legislate, right? For three city council members, first and foremost, and if the city council appoints us to something else, then we sit there by, because we're on the city council. And I don't think we should accept a circumstance where that position was, you know, you voted there, not here. That's just, that doesn't make any sense to me.
So if I were on, which could happen, an animal, I don't know, animal rescue board, and all of a sudden
It would be a nonprofit.
Right, okay, animal rescue nonprofit, and I'm on their board, and all of a sudden the city of Greenville has this wonderful program where they're going to adopt out from City Hall 100 animals every quarter from this rescue, and that contract came before city council, I would have to recuse myself, is that right?
It's right, both sides of the contract.
From, okay, okay, from that. I mean, I know it's different than the E and C, but I mean
Yeah, because we didn't appoint you to that committee. I mean, that's, that was a volunteer, that was something you just did. We're appointing people to some, to, as, to this other entity, and in the act of appointing them, we're losing, it just strikes me as, and I would move, we adopt the, I mean, maybe we have to do this in a, in a different set, environment, but I would move, we adopt the proposed, you know, thing, the course of action, which is to transition our appointment of a council member to a liaison position rather than as a voting member, and appoint a different voting member.
And that, if I could, that would have to come from the alliance, because it's the alliance board, it's the alliance charter that identifies the board seat. So we would have to ask the alliance to make that change. And that change would be, as I understand, Mr. McGirt, that change would be to take the city council member and make them a liaison, so we keep the three appointments that we have, and then convert, and then take the council member and make them a liaison. That's, that's the change, correct?
Does the charter currently state that a member of the city council shall sit on the board, or does it just say the council shall appoint three people?
It says that a member of the council shall be, the council shall have three appointments, one of which will be a council member. And frankly, it says the same thing for GUC, and GUC replied, we need to make the same change.
So would you be willing to lose the council member on the board for the liaison?
I'd be perfectly fine with them being there as a liaison, as long as they can come back here and discuss what they did and vote on here. I would presume that having, we would still be appointing three people to that board, and it pushed kind of a shove, we would still have three votes. But again, that's, that's my position on this. Some of it's specific, some of it's philosophical.
I guess I would, I think it's, I think it's a good move, at the same time, the person with the most direct knowledge of it does not, as I understand, support the change, so I would be very torn when this change did come to a vote, presuming that the alliance agreed with it. And we're also presuming the alliance is going to let us have three seats and a liaison, then they say, you get your liaison, and now it's them with two seats.
I'm pretty sure that's not what they're going to say.
Yeah, okay.
Right, you know, let's point, let's be clear, that the city is a sustaining member of the alliance, and one of two very significant funders for the alliance, so I feel comfortable that the alliance would be, would want to make a change to make the city happy.
And that's reasonable, but we don't have that in writing yet, so, you know.
We, from a staff perspective, and I think from Attorney McGirt, we would really like to get a clear direction from the council on this issue tonight. Now, you don't have to take a vote, you just need some clear direction from the council, because we're going to have to communicate to the attorney, or the alliance, and to the office.
That proposal, to me, seems superior to the condition as to our fixed status quo. That's my, that's my opinion. Having a liaison and appointing a non-city council member to the voting, the voting seat.
Yeah, I'll follow that.
Because currently, the charter says one of the voting members will be a member of council, and that's what's getting us into trouble with the new state law.
I think it is.
Won't be in size tonight.
And Will?
I mean, I think we're finally leaving it as is, also, you know, I'm pretty indifferent to it. If it's the will of council to steal staff's term, to change it, then so be it. If not, leave it as is. You know, I think either way, you're kind of putting yourself, not in a bind, but in a different situation, and neither of them are ideal, so.
But we don't have any choice, because that's the general statute, the statute system.
We can just leave it as is, and we just recuse, it's not a tough discussion for them to come up, so. It's not, it hasn't been that often, I don't think it's
Yeah, but every time it's come up, it's been a, it's been a big, it's been a big deal. Every time it's come up, it's been a major, a major decision.
Yeah, I get that.
Any other discussion?
The consensus is to contact the alliance about option three, or, that seems to be the
You're not going to retire?
Okay, so, we seem, we seem to have, I think it's five of us present, and one of us is, either way.
Yeah, I'm calling it.
Okay. He's abstaining. He's refusing himself.
Five with one abstention.
Well, I'm with, I'm with
Mayor Pro Tem, you vote?
I'm with, I'm actually with Will on this one.
So you're flat?
Let me write this down, what's today?
And no, please, please, please do.
Four yeses, four yeses and two, four yeses and two maybes, is that what we got?
Mayor Pro Tem votes either, though she's cheering to me, she still votes.
So, do a consensus.
So, as far as I'm saying, four of you all want option number three, to contact the liaison, contact the alliance about making, getting a liaison, liaison position for the council member.
There's probably three for that.
How about Rose Austin, since?
Does she vote?
I can vote.
Yeah.
I'm not really the mayor. I'm just the mayor pro tem. So I can still vote, but you're cast
But you can't have a mayor without a mayor voting.
Okay, so, everybody come to the consensus, do we need to vote on this, or we just
I don't think it's a vote, we just get a direction, correct?
Big thumbs up, because they have to change their board, they have to change their
So they need you to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
All right, thumbs up, thumbs down.
They need you to do it, everybody else has done it, okay.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up for the liaison, okay, so it's four two, all right.
Great, thank you all. Item number two is a presentation from Public Works about some solid waste route and collection scheduled changes. I'll kick it off to Kevin Mulligan, who will make an introduction, and he'll turn it over to other staff
Absolutely.
For that presentation. Kevin?
Thank you, City Manager, and good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and council. As City Manager indicated, safe presentation will be on proposed changes to our solid waste routes as it relates to, I'm sorry, it's up there here. Yes, as it relates to our residential side. In the last few months, we've talked about commercial, this is strictly residential, and Mr. Bryant, who is here behind me, he will walk us through that, but I wanted to provide some background first, and after he's done, I will come back and present something on, an update on recycling. So, as far as this plan goes, we have been working on this for a while, we have been, first obtained some routing software, and then additional software to obtain some metrics on our collections, and you'll see some of that. And all of this was done so that we can get to a place where we need to be in optimization of our routes. So with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Bryant.
Ms. Delbert's coming up to the podium, I just want to confirm to the council, this is an item that's just simply for your information, we will not need a vote or a decision from the council, this is just an F I. item for all of you. Okay, Mr. Bryant, Delbert.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem and councilmembers. I just want to speak to you about solid waste route and collection changes that we're proposing. Solid waste, staff, I'd introduce part of the staff also, Kietrich Baker, Carlos Wooton, Maurice Edwards. Also, don't want to overlook 43 members of our team that really make solid waste work. Their names were not mentioned, but these are the guys that really are responsible for our everyday operations of solid waste. Just a little background information, we service about 43,700 accounts, that was in August of 2022, that's a 20% increase over the last 10 years. 22,000 of those accounts are single-family residential. Each day, we run six refuse and recycling routes. We operate Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for routes. Each day, we run six or seven yard waste routes, and one or two bulky routes. There are approximately 2.3 million collections performed by solid waste, performed by solid waste for refuse and recycling. There's more background information, we deposit, or the refuse is collected, is taken to the Allen Road Transfer Station, which is operated by Pitt County. We collect approximately 30,000 tons each year. Recycling is carried to ECBC, we collect about 2,500 tons of recycling, ECBC is located on Stanton Road. A primary reason for collection route changes, the collection routes were last changed more than 18 years ago. About five years ago, we changed a thousand accounts from a Tuesday route to a Monday route to alleviate overtime and to provide those services more timely. So we have a little bit of experience in changing some routes. The change required, is required by the growth of the city in the southeast and southwest parts of the city. Updating routes will balance the collection days, will balance the routes, and will also balance workloads for personnel and trucks. This is important for building teams and making sure that each day is a fair amount of work for everybody. And this is a camaraderie also for our guys. Also, just wanted to mention that in the same time that we have grown, solid waste has remained the same in personnel. Goals for updating, we want to provide contiguous work areas within the city, cost savings, and better customer service, I'll mention how we plan to do that. And also, if we can reduce fuel consumption, that results in less greenhouse emission, noise, and traffic. Balance of workloads, this gives you a typical workday for our guys. We run eight-hour workdays, we have six and a quarter hours for collection, half an hour break, 45 minutes for fuel and maintenance. Maintenance is important because pre- and post-trips are required for our vehicles each day. We have a half an hour to go to the landfill and return to public works. Balance of workloads requires a matrix of things, the collection rate. In six and a quarter hours, we can do about 950 houses, that is after one year of data that we have shown that we can do this. The distance between houses, driving to and from the route, the house density, and the return trip to public works are also part of this matrix. Also, truck capacity, a garbage truck can hold eight to 10 tons, a truck of the same size can only hold four to six tons of recycling. Improved routing and efficiency, the efficiency comes with safety and less backing, eliminating left turns where we can. We want to maximize our collections within the six and a quarter hours that we have. We want to enhance route collection assistance, and also the daily maintenance of equipment that our operators will have time to do, which the operators can do, the minor maintenance such as greasing and identifying problems. This gives you what we are currently running, the number of houses we collect on the route on Monday, you can see the present collection, those numbers, you can see the Tuesdays are our, most collections occur, but we also want to balance this to where there are about 5,850 collections on each day. When we adjust the routes, you will see that Tuesday, with Thursday and Friday have fewer houses, but that also allows us to houses, but that also allows us to incorporate growth in the southeast and southwest parts of the city without having a major reroute. Houses are coming on constantly in these areas, so we'll be able to add those houses to Thursday and Friday with no problems. This route adjustment will affect about twelve thousand customers. Public Works will use the phased approach over twelve months. The phases will occur in two-month periods, the first month will be education and getting the information to our residents, the second month will be used for collection, but there will be one month of collection before a new phase changes. This also can be adjusted for any weather event or anything that happens that would delay us from doing this. This is our current collection days, as you can see that we're all over the city on certain days, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, the contiguous areas, but on Friday, you can see that we're in three different parts of the city. This is what we're proposing, this is a contiguous work area for each workday, each service day. It's also what's preferable for most cities that run solid waste departments is four distinct quadrants. This allows us to have our trucks in one area, also to assist each other if we need it, it also allows our supervisors to be within that quadrant on that service day versus being in different parts of the city. This also allows for assistants to come to a truck that needs help in a quicker fashion and usually there's a route right next door or two routes right next door, so it helps out. This is a comparison of what we're currently doing and what we'd like to move to. Phase one of these changes are highlighted in the pink polygon, in the south section of the city. And to drill down a little bit further, you can see in phase one, which we would like to start in June for the educational portion and in July for the collection portion. But you would see that the Tuesday area in pink would move to a Thursday collection and the light green moves from Thursday to a Tuesday collection. Each phase, and this phase included, affects about two thousand residents. Phase two, area in pink polygons, the west and east sections of the city. The left area moves from Friday to Thursday collection, right area moves from Thursday to Friday collection. Target for this is August and starting right after Labor Day in September. Phase three, pink polygon again, south central sections of the city. To drill down a little bit further, left area moves from Tuesday to Thursday collection, right area moves from Thursday to Tuesday collection. Target for this is October and November. Once again, education being in October portion, collection being in November. Phase four, target December and January, January of twenty-four. Phase five, February and March of twenty-four. Phase six, the final phase of this, targeted for April and May of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. Route design and training is headed up by Kietrich Baker. He used Route Smart and G I S to design the new routes, all existing and new routes are currently on Rubicon. Just explain to you what Rubicon is. Rubicon is a cellular phone-based app that our drivers currently use and use and is able to give them turn-by-turn directions. So if a driver has a new route, he can use his Rubicon app and the phone provided by the city to drive a route with turn-by-turn directions. So they're already familiar with this and we're currently using Rubicon. Training prior to these phases will be headed by Maurice Edwards. He will have the crew leaders drive the routes and training, and this process occurs before any initial initiation of the phases. Implementation schedule, which I went over briefly, once again, started in June of twenty-three, will be the education of phase one and we hope to finish up in April of twenty twenty-four. The collection points on the route are the number of homes that will have changes. And once again, it's about two thousand in each one. Public information, headed up by Carlos Rooton. What we are planning are cart stickers denoting the new service day. Cart stickers will be placed on the green cards. The door hangers will be placed on each resident. We realized that we may have to go through some routes twice because somebody didn't put their card out, so we'd come back again to make sure that they got a cart sticker placed on their card. We will have the Greenville Collects app updated so that a resident can punch in their address and be able to find out what service day they will be serviced on. Social media, newspaper, G T V and the local TV stations will also be utilized to get this information out to our residents. Just once again, cart stickers and door hangers, we want to make sure that this is done so that our residents know what's going on. Cart stickers are the education for four weeks prior to any phase change, any collection change. Door hangers delivered to each resident and once again, the Greenville Collects app. These are what the cart stickers are designed to look like, they're color-coded for each day. We hope this helps the residents and it also, we hope that if somebody calls into public works, if they can tell us the color of their sticker, it automatically gives us a jump on what to instruct them about their daily change.
Appreciate the dramatic change, differences on the color.
Thank you. Also, these are the door hangers, they're also color-coded, they match the cart sticker. So each resident should, will, not should, they will get a door hanger. Collection day changes, Monday is the least affected with just two hundred and sixty, with Thursday being the biggest change, fifty-five hundred houses. Questions?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation, just wanted to say, Delbert, everything about your division is primo, just always primo and how much, I think everyone appreciates the work that you all do and your presentation was primo. I do have some questions, though. Within this, within each zone, how many routes are there within each zone?
Six routes.
Six routes within each zone and that for each route?
That way, that's going to be six for garbage, six for recycling and six for yard waste.
And each route is just one truck, right?
Yes.
And so?
Well, you have one truck for each of those services.
Right, okay. And then you said that there were nine hundred and fifty pickups per route?
Yes.
Is that one person behind the wheel doing all those nine hundred and fifty pickups in a day?
Yes.
That's phenomenal, that's tremendous, really exceptional work there. And then my last question is, Wednesdays is not part of a route, is that a day for fixing the trucks, getting, is that used for other things in other ways?
Let me explain what we do on Wednesdays, Wednesdays is a training day for safety primarily, but also we operate for multifamily recycling. We have to have a day to collect recycling in the multifamily. Also, it is a day that yard waste has to catch up between Monday and Tuesday routes or get a jump on the Thursday or Friday routes.
You all are very busy, thank you for that.
Did you do that for holidays, correct?
Well, we, we, yes, we use Wednesday as the collection day during holidays. If your holiday falls on Monday, your collection day usually goes to Wednesday. We try to avoid the holidays in this phase change, like we started after July, after Labor Day, prior to Thanksgiving, prior to Veterans Day.
It's not.
We tried to make sure that we didn't have a holiday to affect our changes.
Sounds like it's going to be a smooth transition.
Well, there's no going after the first one.
Well, you're on it.
Just say yes, Delbert, say yes. Just say yes.
So what is the impact, did it mean on the multifamily service?
No, no impact on multifamily, as we get through this, multifamily will be next, we will try to get them divided into quadrants a little bit better. Multifamily right now is basically in quadrants, but they are growing too. So we realize that we've gone from four routes to five routes already, so we realize that there's some tweaking to be done there also.
Because I got, I mean, I never get calls of any concern at all about the residential, you know, you guys are like a hundred out of a hundred there. I occasionally get calls about multifamily, right, because, you know, people aren't very good at getting the stuff, getting the trash in the dumpsters and then it's a, so, but this is, that's the only thing I would suggest, you know, the only note I would make is that, you know, multifamily is where, you know, essentially all of the concerns I get called about.
Well, they're growing and also multifamily presents a different option in that when people park in certain places or when they don't put the items in the dumpster, we can't necessarily service it right there. Yes.
I, I don't have any questions, I thought your presentation was wonderful and I just want you to know and your team here and also communicate back to all the people, we saw that picture, the forty, forty-three?
Yes.
Let them know how much we appreciate what you do, you're doing an amazing job with the resources you've got and trying to make it more efficient for your team and also for the citizens of Greenville. I haven't heard any complaints at all, but I appreciate what y'all are doing and what your efforts and your team's efforts are doing to try and make things more efficient using what you do have and please go back and let your team know how much we appreciate what they're doing.
Certainly, certainly.
Okay, so, Delbert, you said the tags that you're going to hang on the doors, you say Tuesday would stay the same, I mean, Monday would stay the same, right?
No, they're all changing.
That's the least amount of change on Monday.
Yes, the least amount of change.
It's the least amount of change on Monday.
Yes.
Okay, so, so does that number include all the pickups for Monday?
No, there's not, it just includes a certain section of Monday.
I, I, the sections were kind of, I would rather for you to block them off in districts so we would know where and when, because I don't want anybody calling me and saying, girl, if you get picked up on Monday, they're used to getting it on Monday, so you're going to send out some information, right?
Yes, yes, we're going to have information, we're going to put a sticker on the car, we're also going to put it on the door, we also will have a social media campaign to let them know what's going on.
And, and we'll make sure that we give the council sort of, before we start one of their transitional periods, we'll make sure that we let the council know with some maps that this area is moving and this area is moving. And we'll make sure we do that and put it in notes to council so you all know in case you have any constituents that call.
Great job.
Wonderful.
Right, and, and I think it's important to thank Delbert, Carlos, Kietrich and Maurice too, for all their help in putting this together, great presentation.
Great job, guys.
Now, Kevin, I think is going to talk a little bit about recycling.
Yeah. A little bit about our recycling, as you know, we've had some recycling challenges over the last couple of weeks or month or so, but just some background on the city recycling process, recycling obviously is placed in our blue carts and then city staff collects it and it's disposed of at the ECBC facility that's up by the aquatic center. The city disposes of this at the ECBC via a contract that the county has with ECBC, right? Pitt County manages the disposal of recycling throughout the county. The county charges all households a fee for that, for the disposal of solid waste, both at the transfer station, we bring it to the transfer station, they then bring it to Bertie County landfill, as well as the disposal of, of the recycling at ECBC. So this is currently on every resident's bill of about a hundred and twenty dollars annually and that's on every county bill. So this is more or less what it looks like, this is not ECBC, but this is much of what ECBC looks like. They do sorting at the beginning stages of the, of the conveyor and then that's how, you know, that piece of equipment on the right, the payloader, and we go up there and we dump our recycling and G F L redumps their recycling and it gets into this hopper and then they, there's manual sorting. There are more current ways of doing it, but this is how ECBC does it, all right? So a bit of some of the challenges we were in in January of 2023, ECBC shut down for two weeks due to required equipment repair, their baler was problematic, it had been problematic since November and they were operating at, at half capacity, but, so the city did not collect recycling during the first week and then we worked with Pitt County to get them to accept it at the transfer station during the second week and then, so it was, our recycling was stored at the, at the transfer station. Late February, there was a meeting held with the county manager, Pitt County Solid Waste Team, as well as city and town managers within the county to discuss what's going on with recycling. So as many of you may know, recycling markets are not performing well and they, Pitt County informed us that ECBC is evaluating their ability to continue to provide recycling services, some of the equipment that they need and that they paid for is very expensive, right, a million dollars or more. So recycling again has not been profitable. Pitt County is investigating recycling options, evaluating potential alternatives to what is the existing method and that includes the recycling collection, handling, processing and transport. We would continue with our method, right, where we go and, and collect from the blue carts and bring it to, whether that's ECBC or wherever we work out with the county. Contamination in commingled collection is certainly a major concern. We've been auditing that along with the county and ECBC and that is around twenty to thirty percent. So that twenty to thirty percent of contamination needs to get separated and brought to the landfill. So the recycling goods are sent away to whoever ECBC has a contract with to purchase those recyclables, but the, the contamination goes to the landfill. Alternative locations for the deposit of recyclables, if the method changes, obviously it'd be difficult to find something as, as local as ECBC, so that would include increased several times resulting in higher costs. So that's a little bit about recycling. So some challenges that we're seeing, Mr. Bryant, I'll talk to you about how we're looking to optimize our residential rates, our residential routes, so we can maintain our rate, but we'll say that, just to bring to your attention, equipment and trucks have, the costs have increased, fuel has increased, parts, labor, recycling options may involve increased transportation. Our fee, that hasn't changed since 2018, is, is going to be tested, all right? And to give you some examples, our side loader, back in 2018, last time we increased the fee was three hundred and twenty thousand. Some new rates that we're seeing are more than what we just awarded a while back, is about four hundred and forty thousand, that, that equates to about eight percent annual increase. Our commercial labor, some significant increases over the last twenty-four months with our commercial labor, so about a fourteen percent annual increase. Obviously fuel, everyone can feel that one.
Kevin, so our commercial labor, what is that?
Commercial labor is when we send out our vehicles to, to outside entities to perform, whether that's, that's solid waste, but that's also other. So if we're too backlog, we'll send it out to supplement or?
Repair and maintenance deals, we charge, so commercial labor is repaired for us?
That's repaired charge, that's right.
That, that are not done in?
That are not done in-house, if we don't have the equipment to actually work on that item, so we'll send it out. So obviously fuel, diesel was three dollars back in 2018 and five dollars, we saw it jump above five dollars, but four sixty-two in January, again, eleven percent annualized increase. Our monthly fee has stayed the same, so just really amazing, amazing work by these folks here. I know Brock does a, a citizen survey and sort of echoes what you, what you guys were saying every couple of years and our solid waste group has received very, very favorable, I think ninety percent, above ninety percent were favorable comments, so that's, that's as high as it gets. So it's just, they do an amazing job. So some challenges, though, over the next, later this summer, we will bring to council a, probably a. a, probably a, our consultant will work with us on evaluating the five, the next five years in our residential, our residential sector and what that fee will look like over the next five years. Thank you.
I know this is not really your wheelhouse. I mentioned this to our city manager. Some other locations are bringing recycling as an industry to their communities, to their counties, to their regions. And I've heard specifically about glass recycling, where you're doing the work right in your region or in your county or two or three counties. Are you, do you see that? Do you think that could happen here in eastern North Carolina, where we would actually have this as an industry that might take shape, where we are recycling our own stuff?
And it's okay, I'll share what we, what we found out from what we learned on that. We share that in terms of economic development, we've always said Pitt County and Greenville is open for business, and that if we were presented with a recycler that was interested in relocating, that we would certainly entertain that through economic development incentives like we would anything else. But that typically our target industries for economic development purposes have been around pharmaceuticals, boat building, they call it value-added ag, which is products that are derived from goods that are grown in the area. So I would think that what Kevin would tell you is we're not, we are not close to the idea of a recycler coming, but, and we would be interested if somebody would recycle. It's just not an area that we are traditionally actively pursuing.
And maybe that's something I can look into. I'm trying to, trying to think if other communities are actively doing that, subsidizing it or trying to, you know, generate that kind of industry. I don't know, I'll look into it. It could be interesting.
Right, and the only other thing to point out is what, I think the point that Kevin was driving home about recycling is that our, our role in recycling is to pick it up and get it someplace for the county to manage the disposal of it or the recycling. That's what we do. We collect it. Our arrangement, and that's the hundred and twenty dollars that the county charges on every tax bill, is that fee associated with the disposal of it. And that service, regardless of the end, what the city does, the collection, is always going to have to be done. Somebody's going to have to do it, and we're, regardless of who takes it to the end. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. And, great, thank you. Mayor Protem, that's all the items we have on the agenda for this evening for the workshop.
Mayor Protem, one thing I forgot to say about the comprehensive interest statute, I wanted to shout out to the city attorney's office, particularly Ms. Danae Alexander, Assistant Attorney, for working on the analysis of that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't forget the staff.
Thanks, man.
Can I move the subject to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Blessing pass. Thank you.